Via teleconference. Prayer will be offered by City Clerk Susan Lovering and Alderman Clemens will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As President of the Board of Alderman, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. To access Zoom, please refer to the agenda or the city's website for the meeting link. To join by phone, dial 1-929-205-6099. The meeting ID is 862-8653-1328. The passcode is 315798. The public may also view the meeting via channel 16. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings. Instructions have also been provided on the city's website at www.nashuanh.gov and publicly noticed at City Hall and the Nashville Public Library. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or channel 16, please call 603-821-2049 and they will help you connect. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
President, I'm home alone.
Alderman Cleve.
I am present. I can hear the proceedings and I'm home alone in this room.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I don't believe she's going to be joining us this evening.
Thank you. Alderman Dow.
Yes, I'm present. Can you hear the proceedings and I am alone.
I'm Prosper. I'm living in 25 Central State House.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, I'm present. I can hear everyone and I am alone.
Alderman Clemens.
I am present. I can hear everyone and I'm by myself.
Alderman Lopez.
I'm here. I can hear everyone. I can see everyone and I'm by myself.
Alderman Tenzel.
I'm present. I am alone and I can hear and see everyone.
Alderwoman Lou.
I'm here alone and I can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Jerry.
I'm here alone and I can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Schmidt.
I am present and alone in my office.
Alderman Laws.
I'm here. I'm alone and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Cleaver.
Present and I'm alone.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
I am present. I am here in this room alone and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Miltshire.
I'm here. I'm alone and I can hear everyone.
You have 14 in attendance.
Thank you.
Also with us this evening is Mayor Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Fulton. Mayor, do you wish to address the board?
Yes, thanks, Madam President. Well, first I wanted to report to you regarding the pandemic and the status of our efforts to try to limit the spread of the virus as much as possible. As you saw, we had a very spike in cases as we saw across the country in December, January, and early February, but in recent weeks, for Nashua, those numbers have gone down and we've seen a decline really across the state and across the country, which is a very good thing. But we still need to be careful about, to take precautions with our masks, with our social distancing, with avoiding large gatherings. Now, we currently, this week, have about 200 active cases. That is down from almost 600 about a month ago. We are running a positivity rate of a little over 6% of the tests being conducted in Nashua. That means that of the people being tested for COVID-19, 6% are coming up positive. Now, that is a better number than we were getting again a few weeks ago. The number went up to 12 or 13% during that period when we saw a lot of new cases. But we still have what they call community spread. There's still people catching the virus that can't, you know, has no known exposure. So again, we need to continue to be careful. Our Public Health Department is continuing to work nonstop on this, not only running testing clinics, helping people who've been tested positive, who have tested positive, their patients, but also now doing some, administering some vaccine. They ran an equity clinic this past week at St. Louis de Gonzague with grant funds for people that are more vulnerable to the disease, more likely to contract it and in neighborhoods where people are less likely to be vaccinated and have access to vaccination. So that, of course, took place right in the middle of the tree streets. So again, they will continue to work hard. We'll continue to do everything possible we can to limit the spread of the virus. Also, Madam President, I wanted to mention one of the items on tonight's agenda, which is the agreement for the school street housing for 150 units of housing. That was approved by the Budget Committee recently. As we know, this would add 150 units of needed housing, smaller units for the, in the part of the market where we've seen the largest increase in rents over the past five years. The studio in one bedroom is where we've seen the biggest rate of increase. And I would ask the board, as recommended by the Budget Committee, to pass that, approve that agreement. We've already, of course, approved a TIF and some bonding to make the project possible and we've dedicated the 400, a good portion of the $400,000 that will be generated in property taxes on an annual basis to help offset a good part of the cost of the Performing Arts Center. But we are, as you know, working on a number of, and have accomplished a number of affordable housing. We've added significantly to the stock of affordable housing over the last few years. We added 150 units on Marshall Street. There is a proposal, the Housing Authority is proposing to add 150 units more to the Bronstein site on top of the, in addition to the 48 or so units that are there now. That agreement would, that would need to be approved by you because there'll be steps that the Board of Alderman would need to approve for that to go forward. One of the conditions, of course, that the Housing Authority has made clear that all residents of Bronstein will, although required to be moved temporarily, will be able to return to that same site with an equal or a better apartment. Now, but we also, at least I'm optimistic that we can, within a short time, see other affordable housing units proposed in that, not by the Housing Authority, but in the neighborhood of downtown and the, and that will help us considerably. I mean, we're trying to, across the board, add to the supply of housing in a balanced way, some more affordable, some more market units, but we're just trying to bring more people downtown and add to the supply of housing, which is, as we know, in short supply right now. Next, Madam President, I wanted to mention that on the affordable housing front that we're proposing that we establish an Affordable Housing Trust Fund and that the first contribution into that fund be made from money we are going to receive from Clock Tower. That's $30,000. We periodically receive payments from Clock Tower. That was part of the HO-DAG approval, HO-DAG grant that was provided by the federal government in the 80s and early 90s. And we're proposing that that money, those funds be dedicated as the first contribution into the Affordable Housing Expendable Trust Fund. I wanted to mention, Madam President, that this is, of course, Black History Month and we are happy to be celebrating. We are going to hold an event at Holman Stadium to commemorate the fact that we had the first racially-integrated baseball team in the United States at Holman with the Nashua Dodgers. Roy Campanella and Don Newcombe played there before they went to the Dodgers and even before, even before Jackie Robinson joined the Major League Club in Brooklyn. He had previously played up in Canada, I think, and, but, so we had the first integrated team in the United States. We will have a number of guests, but Bertha Perkins, Reverend Bertha Perkins, who's been a longtime resident and pastor here in Nashville, will be helping to lead that ceremony and that will be enjoyable and it will be on the local TV channel. I will be hosting a book club, Madam President, on the book, The Warmth of Other Suns, which is about the migration of African-Americans from the South into northern cities. Really well-written book by a woman, by Ms. Wilkerson and she is a very, very good writer. And so if any of you are interested in reading that book and participating in the book club, that would be great. We will also have a number of people on a panel that will discuss the book and its substance. Finally, Madam President, a sad event this past week. Davis Thurber passed away a few days ago. Davis was, you know, a very prominent national and he was president of the Bank of New Hampshire after it was public, but even before, while it was privately held. His family started that bank, I think first known as the Second National Bank, but evolved into the Bank of New Hampshire. They built the building, the bank building, at the corner of Pearl and, Pearl and Main, the northwest corner, which we know is the Bank of New Hampshire, now owned by a different private party. And Davis was just a really good guy. He was a very gentle man. He, a very generous person and he lived on Swart Harris, but then later on moved over to Davis Court where they improved some older houses. He and his wife, Pat, and also improved some houses in the neighborhood, upgraded them. He was, you know, humble and just a wonderful person and it's sad that we have lost him now, to lost him. And he did live a good life. He died at around 94, but it's sad that he has passed away. And that's all that I have, Mr. President, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any responses to the remarks of the mayor? Seeing none.
Madam President, my hand was up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Lopez.
Okay. I just wanted to thank the mayor for his leadership in areas of developing affordable housing. He is correct. There are additional projects that are underway by Neighbor Works and Habitat Humanity, in addition to some larger-scale ones. So it's important to recognize people who are actually working towards that end of helping develop appropriate affordable housing for the needs of the families in Nashua. I also wanted to congratulate him, not prematurely, but in getting us this far in seeing a reversal of our outbreak over the holidays. The Public Health, the Board of Public Health did meet, I think, last week or if not the week before, and we discussed the value of keeping the curfew legislation that's currently tabled on the board's agenda and they are feeling that it probably isn't really going to serve its purpose. Its main goal was to focus on that cluster of holidays with Christmas and New Year's. So they are interested in having us remove it, but they wanted to take the opportunity to specifically encourage people to practice precautions over the upcoming holidays, St. Patrick's Day and Easter. Make sure you're practicing your social distancing and continue masking because while we have managed to reverse the outbreak of COVID-19 in Nashua at present, we don't want to invite any additional strains and we don't want to give them any opportunities to mutate. So it's important for us to maintain course, continue vaccinating, continue social distancing, practice the precautions, and let's put this whole era behind us as soon as possible. Thank you.
Alderman Cleve.
Thank you, Madam President. Actually, I did have a quick question for the mayor and I apologize. I'm sure he said and I just missed it as I was writing my notes. The event at Holman Stadium for the Nashua Dodgers, the celebration, what date would that be? I know you said that it will be aired on.
It's Thursday at 3:30.
This Thursday at 3:30. Thank you so much, sir.
Anyone else? Responses to the remarks of the mayor? Seeing none. Recognition period.
There is none.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection. I'll declare the minutes of the Special Board of Alderman meetings of February 9, 2021, February 16, 2021, and regular Board of Alderman meeting of February 9, 2021 be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
A communication has been received from Sarah Mashat, Community Development Director, regarding Housing Trust Fund relative to Resolution R 2118.
There being no objection, I will accept the communication and place it on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. Is there anyone that would like to address the board? Mr. Keating, name an address for the record, please. You're on mute, Mr. Keating.
I have a question for me.
You can't speak yet, okay?
Okay, thank you.
I'll call on you when I get to you.
The name is Bob Keating from Five Cobra Woods and I'm speaking as a member of Grand Estate Organizing Project. And first off, just a comment about the process in terms of getting on tonight. I don't know if there's some change, but I found it, I got a message back when I was trying to get on Zoom that said there was no meeting tonight. It was only at, I tried a couple of times and then right at, right at 7:30 it came on. So I don't know if that, if that's a change or what have you. So I'm just giving that, giving that feedback. All right. So I thank you for that. Well, first off, I'm, my remarks when I saw the Housing Trust and then heard it directly from the mayor in terms of the proposal, very, very pleased about that. Hopefully you received our communication about the Housing Trust. Was part of the email that we sent to the mayor and to the board. But that idea of the Housing Trust, just very pleased about that and I'll speak a little bit about that in the, in a moment. But as you have heard, communication from us and the residents of Bronstein in regards to the School Street project is that we think that there is a real opportunity here, given that the Bronstein residents are living very close to it and that the, the opportunity here, given that the city has, owns the property and tonight you will have a proposal to sell it to a private developer and that the city has authorized the bond of $2.5 million for the, for the parking garage, another $100,000 for the infrastructure and then linked it to the Performing Arts Center for another $5.5 million. We clearly see the city has seized that this is an important opportunity and we're looking at, as we've communicated previously, this is an opportunity to offer some chance for families and I see one of the families that's on tonight from Bronstein to, if they wish, to be able to move to the new development at School Street, you know, flats. I don't know actually how many people who will want to do that. I think many of the people who signed on to that original petition were doing it for their neighbors to give them a chance to do it. But how are we linking this, this project? We're linking the project in the way in which the mayor and the Alderman have linked the Performance Arts Center with, with the School Street flats. They see that it's advantageous in terms of the project. There were residents of Butters who really felt that the loss of parking spaces was going to be a detriment to them. And in the same way, we think the Bronstein residents should be honored and they can be honored in a variety of ways and, and supported in that by their house, if in fact the project goes through and it's demolished, they will need to move and as a result of their, their loss, if you will, it will, it will provide the opportunity for another 165, actually another 200-plus families that will be able to, to move to Bronstein. So we think in this way, it would send a very powerful message to these families about what they're going to be going through and it could be done in a very, I think, low cost overall to the city. And specifically what I mean by that is that if you look at compensating the families at Bronstein and looking at ways that my proposal today about the Housing Trust, you could come up with a way that the Housing Trust could have been financed for about $1,000 per unit.
Mr. Keating, you need to start wrapping up.
Okay, well.
Thank you.
In essence, that, I'm saying that for less than 3% of how much the board is paying for the authorizations for the two bonds that you can cede even further, which is a great, great thing that the mayor is proposing and, and at the same time to offer money to the residents of Bronstein if their project is developed. But again, I can't, I'm glad to hear the Housing Trust thing and my last one is I'm able to speak at the, at the end when it comes up about the Housing Trust. So I'll state my remarks for that. Thank you.
Not during the conversation. We have another public comment period after, after we take action.
Right, okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yep. Could you give your name and address for the record, please? You're on mute. You're on mute, sir. Prosper and.
It's Prospero. Yeah. Can anybody text him and just tell him it's mute? Because I know I can't.
My question is, is which months the people remove another, another house to live? But I need to talk to my neighbor.
Okay, we need your name and address for the record, sir. I'm not, I'm not sure.
Yes.
You have three minutes if you want to address the board.
Okay. Yeah.
It's your turn. You can go. Sir, did you want to address the board?
What's that?
Do you want to address the board?
Yeah, I need, I need the answer.
I don't have a question.
The question is, which date, which months the people leave and housing?
This is not a question and answer and I don't really understand your question.
The question, you need to, the people live in a housing, remove another, another house. Which months you need to remove it?
I don't have that information, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else wish to address the board? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award for the Internet Security Training. Alderman Laws.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to accept, place on file and approve the three-year renewal of NOBE4 Security Awareness Training subscription to NOBE4 in the amount of $19,388.16. Funding will be through Department 122 Information Technology, Account 54407 Software Maintenance by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenzel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jerry.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Miltshire.
Yes.
You have 14 yeses and zero nays.
And that motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding fiscal year '22 Contract Award Funding for Inforsmart Office Software Maintenance. Alderwoman Lou.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to accept, place on file and approve the annual software assurance renewal to Inforsmart Office in the amount of $274,847.69. Funding will be through the Department 122 Information Technology, Account 54407 Software Maintenance by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenzel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jerry.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Miltshire.
Yes.
You have 14 yeses and zero nays.
That motion carries. Petitions.
There is none.
Nominations, appointments and elections.
None.
Reports of committees. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the February 8th, 2021 Human Affairs Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the February 10th, 2021 Budget Review Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the February 11th, 2021 Substandard Living Conditions Special Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the February 17th, 2021 Finance Committee be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of Board of Aldermen's appointments.
There is none.
Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of Resolution R 2028, authorizing the City of Nashville to enter into a master development agreement with Lansing Melbourne Group LLC.
Alderman Dow. Alderman Dow.
Yeah, before I make the motion, I'd like to get review, question Attorney Bolton. It says that replace with a goldenrod copy. It's my understanding from Director Cummings that the contract was modified and amended and it doesn't require a goldenrod copy. Is that your understanding?
Well, the gold, a goldenrod copy is never required, but if this board wants to make an amendment, you're going to have to describe it sufficiently so that the minutes reflect what the amendment is.
So I can address the, the amendment. So I'll make a motion to amend the R 20028 by replacing it with a goldenrod copy of the amendments made at the Budget Review Committee by roll call.
You've heard the motion. The motion is to amend. Discussion on that motion.
Like to talk to it.
Alderman Dow.
Yeah, so the, I'm going to be paraphrasing from the minutes of the budget committee meeting. It says, so the fundamentals of the deal have not changed, except where we have changed it from being a fee interest to a lease, but otherwise still pretty much the same. Uh, it's a 99-year lease at $900,000 lease rate, 144 apartments. So slightly down from the original figure they were looking at. The city would still transfer $100,000 to offset some infrastructure costs. Streets gaping, particularly on School Street, where we'd be looking to add some parking spaces, 20 or 30 parking spaces in and around the street. Parking itself will utilize the high street garage, up to 150 parking spaces would be set aside and available for rent. The first 10 years would be at $50 per space. This would be about $90,000 a year. All spaces were utilized. The original development agreement contemplated closing or execution sometime in May. We pushed it out to the end of June, June 30th because of the lag getting this agreement in order. It does allow for the TIF to create the public parking on the first floor as contemplated for 2.5 million. It caps it. So the city's obligation would stay at just the 2.5 million and the developer would draw down upon any money through certain intervals as construction proceeds. Going on otherwise, it says otherwise, the agreement stays pretty much the same. So that in essence is the changes from the original agreement, but it was some wording changes to the original agreement. But basically the agreement is the same as it was when it was acted on before.
Motion is to amend. Further discussion on that motion. Alderman Jettie.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. The, um, so the, the, yeah, part of this amendment is this, um, you know, is the provision that the, uh, we're going to pay the builder $2.5 million in exchange for his providing a parking garage at the ground level of the building. And I brought this up at the Budget Review Committee meeting. The, the agreement that, that, that was presented to us does not specify, you know, what the, what the parking is going to be. It doesn't say how many spaces are going to be in the parking garage. It doesn't really describe the, the parking garage. It does make reference to plans. But they're not attached and, and during the budget review committee meeting, the developer said that the plans were being worked on. But they, they weren't ready yet, but he thought that they would be ready soon. I have trouble agreeing to vote for something where, you know, the specifics are not included. You know, we're, we're, we're agreeing to pay $2.5 million. That's clear. But it's not clear what we're getting for the $2.5 million. You know, as far as this parking facility is concerned. There are other, other, um, the agreement makes reference to other attachments, which also are not included. You know, this new concept is that we're not going to be selling this property. We're going to be leasing it. Essentially, we're going to be leasing the air rights. So the city continues to own the, the land. But we're leasing the right to build above that land to this, to the developer. But that, that air rights lease is not included. So I, I think there are some loose ends here and you know, for that reason, I don't want to cut off any, any discussion. But at some point, so I'll, I'll reserve this until, you know, until everyone's had a chance to speak. But I, I guess at some point I would like to move that it be referred back to the committee so that these details can be, you know, worked out and provided. And so that when we adopt this, we know exactly what we're getting into. I, I'm not trying to, you know, stop this project. And we voted to, to, to go ahead with this concept, but you know, it's, I, I just cannot vote for a, a purchase and sale agreement or a, a lease agreement without having any, you know, without having the basic elements included. It just, it just doesn't seem that we would be doing our, fulfilling our obligation to the, to the taxpayers to, to go into this without, without knowing what all the details are. So thank you.
Alderman Lou, Alderwoman Lou.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, I just had a couple of questions out. This, um, this legislation kind of came up so a little quickly. It's been on the table since April and, um, I missed a budget meeting and, and, you know, realized this week that, that it was going to be heard again. So I've, I've tried to, tried to reach out to the, as many people as I needed to speak with. And I apologize because I spoke with, uh, Mr. Cummings today and I didn't think of a couple of things. I, I wonder, will the payment in lieu be available for the School Street Parking Lot Bond Service? First question. To, um, I, I imagine, I would ask Attorney Bolton, Corporate Counsel, I am unclear.
Trey Bolton, did you want to respond to that?
I'm not certain what you're speaking of, talking about a payment in lieu. Is there something in the proposed amendment that discusses a pilot agreement or payment in lieu of taxes?
Uh, you know what? Excuse me. Uh, I, I think I misspoke. It, it's in lieu. Uh, it's a payment of $150,000 and then $300,000, $300,000, $300,000, $300,000, $300,000. In lieu of having part, having a right to park, they're paying us because they can't park underneath. That's the way it reads in the agreement.
If they're paying money into the city, it's available to the city to, assuming it's appropriated appropriately by the Board of Aldermen, it's available to the city to pay the city's obligations. Earlier today, Alderman Jettie called me with his concerns about the lack of a more detailed description of the parking garage. And in an effort to better familiarize myself, I read the agreement that was originally proposed and is attached, was attached originally to the resolution. Now, as described in that agreement, as said earlier, the contemplation was a purchase. In any event, prior to the closing of that purchase, the development plan, which would have included the plans for the parking garage, had to be approved by the city. And if, if those provisions have survived the proposed amendment, then I think the, the concerns may be premature because if the city, and when, when this agreement talks about the city, it is talking about the city acting through the Board of Aldermen and the mayor. And again, unless that's been amended out, that's contained in section 1.1 of the document. So prior to any closing, the development plan has to be approved by the Board of Aldermen and the mayor. So to the extent you want to be sure what you're getting, that should satisfy that concern. Uh, there was an, another question, Alderman Lou, that I received in an email from you early this evening concerning payment of taxes on the property. The general rule is the city does not pay taxes to itself. So city-owned property does not generally have taxes paid. The exception to that is if city property is leased and used by a third party, which is subject to taxation. In other words, someone, some entity that's not entitled to a charitable, religious or educational exemption, that user, the less C of publicly owned property is obligated to pay taxes. Now, there are exceptions to that and there are possibilities of payments in lieu of taxes. And I don't know if any of that is dealt with in the proposed amendment.
You all set, Alderman Lou?
No, I, I, I had a couple of other questions.
Okay.
Thank you. When I, so, um, I will skip to, well, regarding the, my question, um, the terms of the agree, or of the agreement are that this in lieu payment, there will be six of them in years. I don't know, four, three through seven, or three, whatever, three through nine. Um, the terms are that they will be set aside for use to guarantee parking. And so that's why I wanted an understanding of, does that mean that, um, we have no, these are not available unless we're going to repair a parking garage or build a new parking garage? Or does that mean we can use them to, to service the bond that we have committed to this project? And that wording is on page. Perhaps Director Cummings is more familiar with it. I, I mean, I'd be happy to have him address this if you'd like. I think it's page 11.
Hi, I don't know if you guys can hear me. Hello?
No.
Hi, hi. My name is Drew Melville. I'm counsel for the developer. Um, I don't know if I, if anyone can't hear me, just let me know, but I'm talking into my mic in the, the home studio. I just wanted to point out that is on page 11 and it is in the new version of the MDA that, that we were circulating. The payment in lieu parking requirements, those, that you're addressing is section 4.7.
Thank you. I found it.
Thank you. And, um, and also just, just to, to address the earlier comments from Alderman Jettie. We had circulated the air rights lease also a while back. We also, this week, Peter, the developer and my client for LMG, he had gotten plans showing the 49 space parking garage and we had circulated those to, to Tim Cummings. So I don't know if they, how they've gotten around, but I'm, I'm happy to circulate anything that anyone needs as well. And I'll write my email address in the chat if anyone needs, about to reach out to me. Cause I have all these documents and updated stuff as well.
May I continue?
You may.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. I'm sorry.
I, I, I thought perhaps Mr. Melville was going to answer my question, whether, uh, you know, what the restrictions were on that, whether it would be available for bond service.
I can answer.
All right.
If it's required to be held in escrow for another purpose, it will not be available for that purpose.
Thank you. I, I just wasn't sure if that would qualify as parking. Um, will, my understanding of, of the RSA that, that applies to the real estate taxes is that the lease has to specifically name the less C as the party responsible for the real estate taxes? Unfortunately, I wasn't able to view the lease. And I've, I just wanted, I felt due diligence to ask, is that going to be included in the lease? Because my understanding is if it's not, it becomes murky.
Yes, I believe the tenant has to pay the taxes and I'll, I'll take a look at that too. Alderman Lou, and I'll take a note of that to answer your question.
Well, unfortunately I have to vote on this tonight, but, um, I, um, I don't, I'm not sure where Director Cummings decided to send that lease, but I, I certainly haven't seen it. And I've asked, I think, half the board if they had seen it. Okay, I just have a couple of other points. Um, so I understood that we had an amended, uh, piece of legislation, but what I didn't realize is that the redlining would not show on the resolution face page. And it didn't, I didn't see until tonight because at the, um, budget committee meeting, it wasn't discussed. I, I wasn't there, but I did read the minutes that there's a new further resolved that we're, we're escrowing, you know, 40,000 from one fund and 60,000 from another. And I, just for a point, I think that if we have a, a redlined contract, that the goldenrod copy, if there are changes, maybe there ought to be some way for us to, um, identify them as well. I guess I, I was looking for red, red ink. And my last, um, comment is that my understanding, I mean, it's, it seems as though, now Mr. Melville said 49 spaces and someone else said 30 spaces and it didn't seem clear at the last budget meeting, how many spaces would be in that parking lot, but, would you like? Would you like, i- is there anyone that can give me a, an answer to that? If not, I'll, I'll just finish my point.
Mr. Melville? You're on mute.
Uh, I apologize. I'm just, I'll just answer that I'm looking at the plans that I have from Peter from earlier that say forty-nine spaces. I mean, I'm looking at the actual plans that I have.
Okay, so um, you know, that's, I figured with thirty spaces, it's about eighty-three thousand dollars per space. It's way out of what. The going rate for a parking lot, the parking space is, so that is a concern of mine. That um, you, my understanding is like twenty, twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars per space is um. It, it's a round ballpark figure, but we're paying, well, a lot more, maybe twice as much. Thank you. Um, I also think it would be prudent to defer this until we get answers to, you know. The information that we're asking. I'm all set, thank you.
Alderman Dow.
Yes, um, just a couple of things. We're, this is entering into a master development agreement. And it does not finalize any construction plans whatsoever. It allows the city to make a commitment to the developer that we're allowing him to. Build this apartment building with the parking spaces underneath. Um. And gives him some level of comfort in going out and spending a lot of money. Doing the drawings for the plan. The, I'm sure that the, the final plans will come back. Uh, if the no other body to the planning board. Um. But the, the, yeah, and I'm not sure about the parking space cost. If you're talking about an outdoor parking space, that's X. But if you're making a parking space that has walls on three sides of it. And is an underground garage, I'm sure the costs are much more, especially um, with the other things that you have to put into the garage that you wouldn't have for an outdoor lot. Also, when we enter into a, a construction agreement on schools. We enter in an agreement to select an architect and a construction manager. Uh, when this agreement is put in place, it allows the, the. Uh, the developer to finalize things with the architect and the. Construction company that's going to build the building. Anything to do with how the building is built, including the parking garage, will have to go through all of the city planning. That normal projects go through, and all the constraints, including inspections and everything else. Uh, um. Uh, so I, you know, they will develop the amount of parking spaces they can. Uh, right now, they have plans for forty-nine. If the planning board says, no, you, we don't like this design, then it's going to be like forty-four, that, you know, that's beyond our control, but. This agreement is allowing a good faith agreement with the developer to spend additional monies to move forth with this project. The city will have many other checks and balances in the final design. And the things that are being questioned right now, I don't feel, are things that, that impact the master development plan. Uh, some of the amendments will be added to, you know, when we build a school, we enter an agreement with the, an architect and a construction manager, but we have. Initial drawings, we have design drawings, and we have construction drawings. There's three sets of drawings, and they're very expensive on a school. They're probably about. Six to eight inches thick. Um, and they're very, very expensive, so. I, I think this is just the city entering into a good faith agreement, correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Bolton, with the. Developer, to give them the understanding that the city is willing to work with them to develop this project. Thank you.
I think it's correct to say that it locks up this space and the developer can be assured that if he goes and spends money. To get necessary approvals, building permits, uh, planning board site plan approval. Uh, et cetera, we're not going to pull it away from him and make a different deal with another developer. After a major investment has been made, so I think it gives this developer that degree of assurance.
Alderman Lopez.
Thank you. First, I just want to address some, some use of terminology. For the public more than anything else. When Alderman Lou is referring to redlining, she's referring to the red-colored font. When we edit documents and we're looking at them digitally, it's a Word document, so you know, when you make a change, it is colored red. So redlining has a particularly unfortunate connotation. For poor neighborhoods, not allowing them to get loans, so I just wanted to clarify, for anybody listening, that there's no redlining involved with this. She was referring to corrections and changes, and it's just, it's as much jargon as using golden rod when it's all digital, and it's not even exactly golden. Um, so uh, I just wanted to get that out of the way. Um, I do understand what Alderman Dow is saying, um, in terms of this being a master developer agreement. Um, and not needing all the details, um, necessarily to enter into that agreement. But I, and, and I do want to clarify that I think the developer has done his, his due diligence, and has. Certainly provided things that we, we need, like the lease and the um. And the parking lot, but I, I think it's important for us to consider those aspects of it, because I'm, I'm very mindful of. Other large-scale development projects, which we've started on, we've committed on, and then we found ourselves. Pretty ensnared as the developer ended up changing things. I'm thinking of the, the riverfront landing projects where it just, things changed one step after another, after the city had already agreed to it. So while I don't fault the developer at all, I think they've done what they're supposed to do. If we're not even communicating plans and leases to ourselves, I'm a little concerned. Um, I know that Attorney Bolton did some review, um, and only had limited time to do that review, but I would feel more comfortable with him being able to confidently say. One hundred percent, everything we need is in the lease, this is where it is, I know where it is, and I think it's putting him on the spot. To ask him to do that if we, if we haven't really had a chance to all review it ourselves. So I am more inclined, I think, at this point, to support Alderman Jettie's. Uh, request that we return it to the, the committee, unless there's a reason, unless there's a time. Um, commitment, or there's a ticking, this countdown or something. I do understand that as a developer, you want to make sure that you're not, you know, going to lose your opportunity to other ones, but. I also was around when this was put out for bid, and we sat on it for like, four years at least. Where nobody else offered a plan, so I don't think the developer is going to face stiff competition for this. I think this is something that um, we just want to make sure that we have all of the communication. On file, and that everybody who's involved in the decision-making can confidently say, they knew exactly what they were getting into when they did it, just to provide accountability.
All set, Alderman Lopez?
Yep.
Alderman Clemens. All set, Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I just want to speak a little bit in favor of this amendment. Because it is moving the project forward. Uh, for those of you that have any inkling of uh. Building and everything, the ground is starting to thaw, spring is around the corner, and this project should be starting soon. So it does have a timely manner, but that doesn't mean jeopardize that uh, we don't do our due diligence. I feel we have. Now, Alderman Jettie has brought up the question of parking and parking spaces and uh, say, some of it wasn't really clear. Well, some of the meetings I've been to, that issue has been really discussed ad nauseam. Uh, in other words, you've got to look at some of the stakeholders or people who uh, live in that particular neighborhood. And I think you come to, uh, know of a, a good gentleman, Mr. Jim Rafferty. Who is the owner of the River Casino and the River Club. And he, in the beginning, was extremely concerned about uh, the parking and depletion of parking spaces. Thus, the project got moved up with the parking spaces underneath. Uh, much care was brought in with much listening and input. From people who now, like Mr. Rafferty, support this project. At the end of the day, when you go to look what's underneath that particular uh, building that is going to be built on the site. And look at the current number of parking spaces. But with the remodifications, and then this is me uh, speaking as uh, Chairman of the Infrastructure Committee. A lot of these things are a puzzle that we're going to put together, and that's going to be the re, uh, redistricting of some of the parking. That's going to be done in the school street. So if we look at, is there going to be a loss to any parking in the area? The answer is probably maybe ten spaces. That is not bad compared to what's going on in that particular facility. So therefore, a lot of due diligence has been done, and I, I would like to see this project, because we're in the beginning of the building season. That is start to go forward. I think our due diligence has been met, and uh. I think it's time to move this project forward. Thank you very much, Madam President.
You're welcome. Alderman Clay.
Uh, thank you, um, Madam President. Um. I, I know that we, we've talked about this, and it, and it sat on the table for a while and so on. Um, I do remember asking the question about parking spaces. I do remember asking. Would the, the number of spaces that fall under the building equal those that were being um, removed? And, and the answer was, um, not exactly. Um, I don't recall offhand, and I was trying to go through my notes really quickly, if numbers were given, and I believe that they were given. But what was uh, significant that I did write in my notes is that. Um, the way that they're doing the design and the way that they're um, using that, those monies that we'll be getting through the bonds and so on, to uh. I don't want to say beautify, but to fix the area will give us the equal amount of spaces, so that in the end, we would end up with, I think, a few more. Than what we would have had, um, as it was, and, and I think we need to be cognizant of that. Um, and while I, I truly respect um, my colleagues who feel that. We, we should bring this back. I, I, I do think that, you know, the, the developer has made a lot of concessions. And we have been going back and forth, and to do that to them again, I think is um. It could possibly hurt this deal, and I really don't want to do that. I don't want to delay it any longer, so thank you so much.
Anyone else on the motion to amend? Sir, I can't have you speak, it's not public comment, period. Alderman Lou?
Thank you, just um, just in response to a couple of comments, um. I don't know if I, I would call this a good faith agreement. Um, to me, any agreement that is going to. Financially uh. Contract, and it's just more than a good faith agreement. So for that reason, I feel. Going in, um, sir, do you mind muting, please? To know going in, um, what the, you know, what these contractual obligations are, and, and there. I don't, I didn't ask about how many parking spaces. Um, you know, that, to me, that's not even a concern, but uh. If we're paying two and a half million dollars for a garage, and. At the budget meeting, uh, Director Cummings say, says there will now be thirty spaces. But the night that I come to decide, to, to vote rather, I'm told that it's fifty spaces, and. I'm trying to decide, are we paying fifty-one thousand per, per space, or are we paying eighty-three thousand per space? I mean, that's a substantial. Financial consideration, in my opinion. Um. I just, and I just don't think the, the, I don't understand why uh, someone that could speak to this wasn't here tonight. In terms of, we can't keep them waiting any longer, my feeling on that is that. We considered this in April, never heard about it again till, I think, September, when it became. An issue because. Because the question of um, of funding, of, of authorizing a bond for the. Per, uh, Performing Arts Center came into the discussion, and all of a sudden, we wanted to include two and a half million dollars. Because that would uh, make this deal with Lansing, Melbourne, um. Melbourne, Lansing, rather, um, better, it's what they needed. So we approved that, and. We didn't hear anything again until February, so I, I mean, I don't think we're dragging our feet, but we are just asking for uh, some. Some uh, concrete information before I commit financial uh. Ruin, no, uh, commit to the financial uh, obligations. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
Um, so I don't, I don't know what um, Alderman O'Brien is, is referring to in terms of plans for the. Internal parking structure, but I agree that we have definitely talked about the importance of parking in the surrounding areas, uh, ad nauseam. Um, and that it is very important that we, we address that. That was one of the primary concerns that I had with the building as well, and I think one of the real victories. Um, about this project is that it has internalized parking that does account for the needs of the community around it. Um, I don't know, based on what uh, Alderman Jettie has said, or a hundred percent. Um, where we ended up with, that that has been assured as being part of the lease. If I understand some of what Alderman Dowd said. Um, that parking could still be modified and could still be changed, so that it does not meet the same level of need. Um, and that was a major factor in, in my decision-making to be in support of this. Um, I would point out, however, that um, the ground is not going to thaw any much faster if we. If we tabled this just for this Alderman meeting, and we do have an infrastructure committee meeting tomorrow, so. If all, if Director Cummings has a plan, a map, or um, whatever that was sent by the builder. And has the lease, we could just refer it to that committee tomorrow and review it then, and then I don't think that much time would be lost.
Uh, Madam President, I might be able to answer this parking question for you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Mr. Cummings never said thirty spaces in the garage. It's always been forty-nine or fifty spaces in the garage. Where this thirty may come from. Is that in addition to the spaces in the garage. We believe that we can add. Twenty to thirty spaces on the street. Factory Street and other high street. You might have seen that. We put up barriers on Factory Street during the summer. To demonstrate that you could put parking all along the north side of Factory Street, and it would not affect traffic flow in the least, which it did not. But there are other spaces, uh, High Street, School Street, so twenty to thirty spaces on the street. There are seventy-eight parking spaces in the lot, so if there are forty-nine or fifty spaces. In, on the current, current surface lot. If there are forty-nine or fifty spaces underneath the. School Street housing, plus twenty to thirty spaces on the street, you come up with. Either seventy-eight or at the least sixty-eight spaces that would be provided in the area, meaning. At maximum, a loss of ten, but pu- but possibly less. I also have to say that. I mean, the Board of Alderman operates according to a committee proceed, a committee structure, and the point of the committee. Approach is that details, like especially, and the more important, the more complicated and complex the issue is. The more important the committee structure becomes. Because you have to go to the committee meetings. You have to follow what's going on. You have to ask these questions when there are people present to be able to clarify them, maybe make small changes if that's required. But this has to be done, you have to do your homework, you have to show up. You have to go to the meetings, and you have to think of these issues and raise them in the, what, year or two years that this has been pending? The committee structure is designed to avoid exactly this. Very detailed, you know, questions that no one can kind of answer right off the fly, like. Some provision of a very detailed agreement, what exactly it means. That has to be, you have to apply yourself and do the homework. As Diane Sheehan used to say over and over again. Aldermen have to do their. Aldermen have to do their homework. And that requires that you get up to speed before 10 minutes before a vote on a major proposal. So this, this should have been raised at the committee in April, in September, in February. You know, this, this has been pending for a long, 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 long time. And we've gone over and over and over the parking. Finally, the parking was not added to accommodate the developer. He didn't ask for this at all. This was done for the neighbors. This was done for the neighbors. So I think it was a reasonable approach, a reasonable compromise. The parking is paid for by the property taxes that will be generated by this housing. And it will also generate enough property taxes to help pay for the Performing Arts Center. So, and the, and the link there is that this builder said the reason he's, he had been thought of in Nashville was because of the Performing Arts Center. The point is the Performing Arts Center attracts private investment. These are some of the private dollars that are coming to Nashville because of the Performing Arts Center. Hence, the connection, money from this project would be, has already been approved to be applied to the Performing Arts Center to help offset the cost. And as we get more private investment, this, that will happen again.
Thank you, Mayor.
I hope that answers the, I hope that answers the parking question.
Alderman Clemmons, did you want to say something?
No, I couldn't have said it better than Mayor Donches did.
Okay, Alderman Jettie.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I don't know who, who you're talking about, Mayor. But I think I have perfect attendance at the Board of Aldermen meetings and all of the committee meetings. And I'm on the Budget Review Committee. And I've been to every budget committee, Budget Review Committee meeting. This project, you know, may have been discussed by you and the people in your administration for months. But it hasn't come before our committee until very recently. You know, a couple of weeks ago. And during that meeting that we had, I raised these questions. I asked these questions at that meeting. And I also spoke to Director Cummings with specific questions. And a week ago, I pointed out what I thought was, you know, deficiencies in this contract. And he agreed that I raised some good points and that he would get back to me. So he got back to me about 2:30 this afternoon. This is your administration, Mayor. So about 2:30 this afternoon, he got back to me. And he told me that that my concerns were unfounded, that, that he had spoken to the legal department. And they felt that there was sufficient safeguards in the agreement. And so I, I called Attorney Bolton and told him my concerns. Attorney Bolton, you know, didn't said that he wasn't familiar with all, everything that I was raising and that he would look into it. And that was just tonight, just a few hours ago. So he hasn't had much time to look into it. But, you know, part of this project, you know, part of the problem that we dealt with was the parking problem. And part of the compromise was coming up with this parking facility underneath the building. And your own arithmetic includes, you know, 49 or 50 parking spaces under the building. So I ask you, where in the resolution, where in the proposed agreement, it specifies how many parking spaces are going to be included? I've looked at it extensively. There isn't, there isn't any number provided. Now, at the last Budget Review Committee meeting, I asked, the developer was there, Mr. Foltz. And he said that, you know, plans were being worked on and would be completed shortly. So that meeting was a few weeks ago. You know, I asked, I've been asking for those plans. I asked Director Cummings for them. Tonight, we find out from the attorney for the developer that those plans, in fact, have, for the parking garage, have been completed. And they were provided to your administration. But we haven't, they haven't been distributed to the committee or to the Board of Aldermen. So I'm not trying to, you know, stop this project. I just think that for you to accuse us of not having done our homework, I think is unfounded. I think it's your administration that hasn't done its homework. And I don't think it's fair for you to ask us, Aldermen, to vote on something that has all of these holes in it. And, you know, the developer's attorney tonight, you know, said he's got, they've got the plans. In fact, they submitted them. Why weren't they given to us? I don't know. He's asking, he's telling us that there's 49 spaces in that plan. We're taking his word for it. I'd like to see it. I'd like to see the plan. I'd like to see the 49 spaces. You know, these other, these other things. I just think your criticism is unfair to, to me and to Alderman Lou. And I don't appreciate them. And so I just don't understand why we can't have the details that we're asking for and why we're being asked to vote on something without those details being provided. And for that reason, I'm asking that that this matter be tabled and referred back to the Budget Review Committee so that these details can be provided. And then, you know, we can have, the Budget Review Committee can have a special meeting. We can get on this right away. You know, there's no reason why we have to take a long time looking at this. But once those details are provided, then we can satisfy our obligation to our constituents and vote on this and knowing what we're getting into. And we can do it at the next Board of Aldermen meeting. And I don't think that that's unreasonable to ask the developer. I think the developer would agree to us, would agree with us that, you know, that these details are important and should, should be provided. It sounds like he's already provided them, but we just, they haven't been distributed to us.
Well, Alderman Jettie, actually, I wasn't referring to you specifically, but I think your criticism is unfair. I mean, the idea that this was just proposed, this, look back to when this was proposed, what, at least a year ago, at least. And it's been pending that entire time. I mean, I've been to, you know, I was at the last committee meeting. I don't remember these questions being raised, but maybe, maybe they were. But I remember going over and over and over and over the whole parking situation numerous times with numerous committees. And every time, we have said, and I've seen a plan, you know, some time ago, now maybe, that it was either 49 or 50 or 51 spaces in the garage. And at the last meeting, the builder was there. And he said it depended a little bit on the configuration of the units and sort of the final footprint of the building as approved by the planning board. That they would want the spaces to line up with the units. And it would either, you know, so it depends a little bit on what the planning board ultimately approves. Now, but we have made the commitment over and over and over and over again to 49, 50, or 51 spaces. And we've gone over and over and over, the idea that we're going to put 20 or 30 spaces on the street. I think I was, more than anything, referring to the idea that there is going to be 30 spaces in the garage. No one has ever said that. No one has ever said that. They have said 20 or 30 spaces on the street. Now, it's possible if you're just listening casually and not really paying attention or not doing your homework, you might think somehow get the idea that someone had said 30 spaces in the garage. That has never been proposed and has never been the plan. And we're here discussing 30 spaces in the garage as a possibility that's never been discussed and never been proposed and is not a real issue. And things like that should have been resolved in the committee. Now, I don't know if two weeks means that much, but I do know that we have, this thing has been pending for a long, long, long time. And it's been discussed over and over and over, not only with the Budget Committee, but with the Planning Committee, with the Infrastructure Committee. And we've gone over these details repeatedly in front of many committees.
Mayor, they're not in the agreement.
I don't know, Mr. Alderman Jettie, which of these issues you raised before. I don't know. Because I, you know, I know that you had a series of written questions and we responded to that. But, look, you know, if you don't like the project, vote against it. You know, if you don't think it's complete, vote against it.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. So I've been, I've been listening to everything. And, you know, I, I, we can't put a number into the agreement because as was stated, the, it's subject to change by the, by the planning board. And in addition to that, I could put that it's going to be, I could put in, we could put in there that it's going to be 98 spaces only for motorcycles. Maybe it's only 30 spaces for box trucks. I don't know. Depends on how big the vehicle is that goes in there. I mean, the point is, is that it's always been 49 spaces, 50 spaces roughly, from the time that it was originally proposed to now. But the planning board is going to have the final say on the final design and everything else. But we can't get to that point until we pass this. And so my suggestion is, is that we move forward with this in order to get the answers that you're all are looking for. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I did have a conversation with Director Cummings this afternoon on a couple of different subjects. And one of them was the potential lease. As is my understanding, and I, Attorney Bolton, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Attorney Leonard is doing the lease on this. And I'm told that it's going to basically be the agreement that we're, tonight, plus the mets and bounds of, of the property, which has to be in all leases. And trust me, I've had a lot of experience with leases over the last year, year and a half. And as far as, and only Attorney Melville can probably answer this, that they're going to start construction soon. I know that the two school projects are getting started in March or 1st of April at the latest, as soon as they can put a shovel in the ground, because the construction season around here is not very long. So, and the longer you wait to get this started, as I can, again, from the school projects tell you, the costs are going up all the time. So, you know, I think that, that from an overall benefit to the city, I think we need to move out on this. But I will say, if it's the will of the board to move it back to budget, then I would ask that detailed questions be developed by whoever has questions on the project. They get sent into Donna Graham, and she presents them to whoever, the entire Board of Aldermen and the legal department and Director Cummings and the mayor. So that when we have the budget meeting, we will have all the answers to present. I would not want to get into the budget meeting and end up with other questions that can't be answered. And this drags on ad nauseam. So if it does get referred back to budget, I would please insist that the questions be developed and submitted in time so that we can discuss them with some reasonable assurance of coming up with the final answers at the Budget Committee. I don't think we go out on a limb here in agreeing to this as it's, as it's written. We have other bites at the apple to protect the city and the taxpayers as far as final designs and everything else. And so, you know, I don't think that this is locking us in in a cement boot. I think it's giving the developer the wherewithal to proceed with spending money to develop more of the drawings and to get things lined up so that he can move forward. And they still have to sign the lease. And by the way, the lease will have to come back to the Board of Aldermen for approval. And the mayor would have to sign the lease. So there are other checks and balances. And I think if we move forward with this tonight, I don't think it, like I said, puts such severe constrictions on us that, that we can't make inputs later. Thank you.
You're welcome. Alderman Lou.
Just a clarification. Alderman Dowd, I think that you quoted from February 10th budget meeting. And I specifically wrote in my notes, 20 to 30 parking spaces. I also remember reading that in the, in the meeting notes. Hearing that and hearing something different tonight, I guess if I'm the only person that cares whether we're going to spend 20,000. Oh, you, okay.
That's not fair to the rest of the board, to assign any kind of, you know. It's just not okay to do.
I'm not sure what you're saying. I did some research, but
What you're saying is you know how the rest of the board is going to vote or do something. You don't really know that, so.
Okay. This did come to the, come up again, changed two weeks ago. The questions I'm asking have to do with the changes. And I did, I did reach out to six board members today as well as other people to ask if, if they had seen the lease. Because I'm concerned that we have no guarantee that they, that the, I spoke with a few people and no one seemed, it seemed very vague about the real estate, the property taxes. I just, I, I understand that Alderman Dowd was able to contact the Melville. Nobody responded to me. I didn't have Melville's number to reach out to and, and ask. But, you know, I'm also dealing with, I guess I'm a little, also a little insulted that Mayor Donches, you're going to call me down and anyways, it's only been two weeks. So, thank you. That's all.
Alderman Lopez.
I do think it is important for us all to remember that people communicate in different ways and they process in different ways. So somebody may be more articulate than the next person. That doesn't mean the other person is not paying attention or not listening. So just food for thought that people are not all, they don't all have access to the same levels of information. Personally, I would be more assured if we had the, all of the information that's being referred to tonight on our plate. But I do hear what Alderman Clemmons is saying that we have additional checks and balances with this, there are potential opportunities to, to make things change. So my question to Alderman Dowd with his experience in developing school projects is, if this is urgent because it has to be started in the, you know, when the ground is soft enough. if this is urgent because it has to be started in the, you know, when the ground is soft enough, what's our, what's our turnback point? Like if they start digging into the ground, I mean, we're talking about a parking garage, which is literally the first thing they have to build. But it's also subject to dimensions and all that kind of stuff. If they dig a big hole in the ground and we say, okay, look, you're not gonna be able to do what we thought you could do. What kind of, what kind of alternatives do we have?
Alderman Wiltshire.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, just two things, just for one clarification upfront. I did not talk to the developer or, or Mr. Melville at all today. I talked to Director Cummings and on several subjects, not just this. And and as I think people might have missed, I just said it, that when the lease is developed, it has to come back for approval to the Board of Alderman. The lease is going to be pretty much the wording that's in the agreement, plus the mets and bounds that defines the property specifically. That's a legal requirement, as I'm sure Attorney Bolton could, could attest to. But the, if this, if, if, if the construction is not started, and I would refer, I'd, I'd get back to Mr. Melville to answer the question. I, you know, I don't know when, I know we're talking about having a final lease assignment and closing in May. And, you know, you don't just call a construction company and have them start in a couple of days. It takes time to gear up. Takes time to order material. I mean, you know, don't know what the construction plans are yet, but I also would go out on a limb and say, if we don't enter into this agreement, they're not gonna go spend the money to line all that construction up. So until this agreement is signed, I think, you know, they've got their hands tied. They're not gonna spend a whole lot of money, and then all of a sudden we decide, you know what, we don't want to do this. No, we'd have to have this commitment. We don't have this commitment. They don't have our commitment that we want them to go forth. So I would ask President Wiltshire to let Mr. Melville answer.
Well, Madam President, I have more information on this.
Okay, Mayor.
We're, we've, we've been discussing, what, something an hour, based upon the idea that a parking plan has never been submitted. As part of the record of the Budget Committee of August twelfth of last year, the parking plan was submitted to the Budget Committee. Now, it was submitted so long ago that maybe people don't remember that, but it was submitted and it's part of the record. Not only has this been discussed before the Budget Committee, but remember, we did bond hearings and we presented a lot of information there as well. And there was TIF legislation. Information was presented there. That's why I'm saying we've gone over and over and over this. It's been, and there've been informational meetings, just, you know, updates to infrastructure. So it's not that, it's so, this has been presented to more than the Budget Committee, but if the, if the whole present premise here is that there's never been a parking plan, that is not correct. August twelfth, it was submitted six months ago as part of the record. Now, the way that, where this twenty to thirty spaces comes from, that is the street parking. That is the street parking. Yes, we've said twenty to thirty spaces on the street. Forty-nine or fifty spaces in the garage. That has been clear for a long, long, long time. And the plan was submitted to the Budget Committee six months ago.
I was actually still.
Alderman Lopez.
Fine question. So, I mean, given what the mayor has just said, I, I still maintain that the plan being attached to this legislation tonight would have probably cleared up all of these questions. But with what Alderman Dowd replied, I feel like we are, we can move forward with it because if we need to make changes to the lease after the next step, then there wouldn't be any particular issue. I just want to clarify that it was said earlier that if you want to vote against this because you don't like the project, I would vote against the amendment or moving too quickly on it because I do like the project, and I don't want this to turn into another debacle. I, I mean, I guess I'm being unfair calling it a debacle, but uncomfortable situation, like what we had with Riverfront Landing that costs more money, because I'm conscious of the fact that this is moving into an area of, of low income needs, and I don't want people to, in the future, start blaming people who are living there for costing the city more money or getting special favors or anything. So I do think it's important for us to have these answers. But we have them. We just literally need to put them in probably the next agenda meeting or the next discussion where that lease comes back to us. So I would be comfortable moving this forward. I appreciate the diligence that Alderman Jettie showed. And I do think he brought some, some important issues up, and I appreciate Alderman Lou's attentiveness, but I do think we also have enough information right now to at least do the master developers agreement.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I'm looking at the, I wasn't at this meeting, but I'm looking at the minutes right now. And the question was from Alderman Clea, Director Cummings, the fifty spaces that you said are gonna be there, did we lose any spaces? Or do we have fifty, and are we still going to have fifty? And I'm going to quote Director Cummings. No, this is going to be an approximate reduction of about thirty spaces. I want to say we have about eighty in the school street lot now. We will have about fifty in the school street lot when it's all said and done. But that's why it's important that we create that additional twenty to thirty on-street parking in and around the development. I think it's important that that got on the record tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Clemmons. Alderman Jettie.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Chairman. The, the, you know, the, the numbers that, that we're talking about, you know, are things that have, have been, have been said. I mean, I, I know that in the past, we've talked about fifty spaces. What I'm saying is that this agreement, that, you know, that this resolution is adopting does not provide that, that number. Now, the mayor said that the parking plan was submitted back in August. Well, at, at the Budget Review Committee meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago, you know, we, we, you know, the, the developer said that the plan had not been finished yet. And I think if, if Attorney Melville is still on, maybe he could answer. I, I think he, tonight, he said that, that he submitted the plan to, to Mr. Cummings within the last week or so. So all I'm saying is that, you know, we, you know, if, you know, we can talk, you know, if, you, you, you can't enforce a contract based upon, you know, words that were spoken at, you know, at meetings or, you know, during discussions or whatever, you have to look to the document. You know, if it's not in the document, it's not there. You can't, you can't submit, you know, evidence of, of what was intended. You've got to go by what's in the document. You've got to read the document. And, and right now, the document that's, that, that we're dealing with does not tell us how many spaces are gonna be in this garage. And, you know, you know, part of the deal was that we were, we were, we were agreeing to pay the builder two and a half million dollars to build a garage to provide, you know, approximately fifty spaces in order to satisfy the parking concerns of the neighbors. You know, all I'm saying is that until that number appears in, in, in an agreement, you know, it's not there. So if, if this plan, if, if the mayor is correct, and this plan was submitted in August, you know, let's just attach it to the agreement. Or if the agreement, you know, was, was recently, if that was just a concept and that, that really wasn't a plan, if the, you know, if, if there is a plan, as Attorney Melville, I think, said, that has been prepared now, you know, let's, let's just put it in there. So it's, so it's something we can depend on. And I think, you know, we can do this within a couple of weeks, you know, by, by our next meeting. And I don't think that's going to, you know, hamper any, you know, any, hamper this project or delay this project, or certainly not, you know, kill this project. I'm not against this project. I was against it, but we, we voted for it, and I accepted that vote. I'm not trying to kill the project now. I, I want, you know, I, I accept the vote. Let's go ahead with the project, but let's, let's do it correctly. So, you know, I made a motion to refer it back to the committee.
That's your motion? Alderman Jettie.
Yeah, my motion was to table this and refer it back to the Budget Review Committee.
You can't do both.
Think Attorney Bolton wanted to say something.
Attorney Bolton?
Tableting and referring are two different things. They cannot both be done simultaneously. They could be done sequentially. But it has to either be tabled and be in possession of the full board, or it has to be referred to a committee and then be in possession of the committee.
Okay, hearing that, I, I, I moved to refer it back to the Budget Review Committee.
Okay, Alderman Dowd.
I was just gonna say that Attorney Melville showed the parking plan. Options we have are if you want to take that parking plan as the proposed parking without nailing it down to exactly fifty spaces, because again, I, I don't think, you know, that's what you want to do, and, or if you want to make the, the approximate fifty spaces part of the lease, that can be done too, because the lease is still being written and will have to come back to us for approval. I'm not sure that sending it back to the, to the Budget Committee is, that's just the delay in, in my book. So, you know, those are two things that can be done. You could make a motion to, to add the plan that Attorney Melville just showed to the current agreement. Or you could say that in the lease agreement, you'd like to see the statement that approximately fifty parking spaces will, will be part of the lease, and you can't say exact, you'd have to say approximate for all the reasons mentioned in the conversations. But I don't think moving it back to the Budget Committee at this point is prudent. I, I think that there are other alternatives, and I, I think for the expediency of getting this done, that doesn't mean that we're finalizing it and writing it in indelible ink tonight. The lease, the lease would be the next step, and that lease is being written. It'll include the words in this agreement, plus anything else we want to add, and including the mets and bounds, and that will come back for approval. But let's get the contractor on the hook so that he knows that he's, the city is willing to work with him and that, that we're, you know, that he has some confidence that he's gonna be spending all his money in Nashua and not be hung up on, on, on details that can be worked out in other documents.
Okay, the motion is to re-refer. Anyone else? Alderman Lou.
Um, oh. So I've gotten my ans, my answers. I mean, it's not in the, Mr. Melville has, has answered my questions. Is it possible that we could just ask him to give us a little idea of what we're looking at on the screen? Because if he could, if I had understood that diagram, then I would vote against re-referring. I mean, it would make a difference.
Yes.
Mr. Melville?
Yeah, yes, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm, I'm just, I apologize again. I'm working with my audio visual kind of home studio slash office here. The, what we're looking at is the, is the first floor plan. It's labeled forty-nine spaces here.
We can't see it.
Oh, okay, sorry. I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and do the share screen again. Let me try that.
What it's worth, your sound quality is amazing.
Thank you. I have a new, I have a new console I just put in a couple of days, days ago. Let's see now. Can you all see it now?
Yes.
It's on one of those screens. Okay. So what you're looking at down here towards the left, the forty-nine spaces are marketed in, in red, just the label forty-nine spaces. And they've drawn it from the first floor plan here, and this is what I received this morning. So, like I say, this is brand new for me as well. But this is what we're showing is the, you know, the parking garage plan. And yes, the idea is that we're in the, we're in financing markets. We're trying to get moving and get the shovels in. We built the parking garage for Snu up the road in Manchester. And we did the same thing where we closed our financing as early in the spring as possible, with the intention of what we did there is just getting, getting started right away, you know, right after the fall.
And if I could just follow up?
Alderman, Alderman Lou.
So I, I think the, so the lobby is on the top right, and then all of those tri, all of those rectangles are the spots?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
If it helps, as a professional engineer, I can tell you that the, the layout of the spaces is correct. This, the, the width of the spaces is correct, and there are fifty spaces, forty-nine spaces.
And in case anyone didn't know already as well, Mr. Flots is a, is a parking engineer by trade. And he probably knows the IT parking manual by, by memory and how big the spaces have to be and everything else.
Okay, thank you.
Motion before us is to re-fer. Anyone else? Mr. Melville, will you take your visual down now, please?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes, I, I withhold my, my comments until later. It doesn't refer to the re-fer motion.
Motion is to re-fer. Seeing no other discussion on that motion, will the court please color roll? Alderman O'Brien.
No.
Alderman Clea.
No.
Alderman Dowd.
No.
Alderman Karen.
No.
Alderman Clemmons.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Tanza.
No.
Alderman Lou.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
No.
Alderman Laws.
No.
Alderman Cleaver.
No.
Alderman Harriet Catherine.
No.
Alderman Wiltshire.
No.
You have one yea and thirteen nays. Then that motion fails. The motion before us is to amend further discussion on that motion. Alderman Jettie.
Could I, could I move that the, that the plan that Attorney Melville put on the screen, that that be included in the, in the proposed agreement? I think the proposed agreement in paragraph four point five point one talks about the, the parking garage as shown in the development plan. If that were attached as part of the development plan and attached to this agreement, you know, that would, I think that would satisfy the, the problem.
You're making a motion to, go ahead.
Could I ask whether Attorney Melville on behalf of the developer would be willing to attach that plan he's just shown us to the agreement?
Yes, Alderman, and that was the intention, was to use that as, as, to incorporate that into our documents. That's what we didn't have a chance to do before this meeting, was to actually get it incorporated. I know Attorney Leonard is out, and, and between everyone's work schedules, we just didn't get to. But that's totally the intention, is to have that be the exhibit in the development plan.
So that's your motion, Alderman Jettie, is to add the drawing that we saw from Attorney Melville?
Yes.
Okay, so the amendment is to amend, to add the visual that, the parking visual that Mr. Melville gave us, and replacing the amendments made at Budget Committee.
Point of order, and I can check with Attorney Bolton. I don't think it's replacing. Uh, um, point of order, and I can check with Attorney Bolton. I don't think it's replacing the amendment. I think it's in addition to the amendment. Uh, we have to vote on this separately, Attorney Bolton, and then make it part of the original amendment, or how, how's the best way to handle that?
Yeah, I think that's correct. It would be an amendment to the amendment. If it passes, then you vote on the amendment as it has been amended. And then if that passes, then you vote on the resolution.
Right, thank you.
Okay. So you've, so, okay.
You used too many tabs, and now you're making an outline. You're in the little tiny letters.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so the motion is to amend with the drawing? And then the motion to, if that passes, motion to amend the amendment?
Right.
Attaching and incorporating by reference the plan is properly regarded as an amendment to the motion to amend. So if that passes, then you will have before you the motion to amend as it has been amended.
Okay. So you've all heard that. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll? Alderman O'Brien?
No.
Alderman Cle?
Yes.
Alderman Dow?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
No.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Laws?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright?
No.
Alderman Wulshin?
Yes.
You have eleven ayes and three ayes. And that motion carries. Um, so now we need to amend the amendment. Is that, no?
No, we've amended the amendment, so we're now voting on the amended amendment.
As amended.
As amended.
Okay, any, any further discussion on that motion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Cle?
Yes.
Alderman Dow?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Laws?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright? Alderman, Alderman Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Thank you. Alderman Wulshin?
Yes.
You have fourteen ayes and zero ayes. And that motion carries. Alderman Dow?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R twenty oh twenty-eight as amended by roll call.
The motion is for final passage as amended. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none?
Yep, as his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Skip?
Yes, thank you very much, madam. I, uh, I wasn't aware that we were going to get into this convoluted argument about parking spaces and so on and so forth. But in general, I'm very much in favor of the, uh, project moving forward. I think it'd be beneficial to the city and so on. And there's a lot of pluses and a lot of positives that go along with it. However, city land giving to a private developer for profit indefinitely into the future. I think the least that we can do is ask that fifteen percent or twenty-two of the units minimum be affordable housing. And I think, I feel strongly about that. I think it's city-owned property, and we need to get some benefit. This is a tremendously important need for our city and for our folks. And I think it would be very, very opportune time to incorporate at least that, that many units in affordable housing. That's all.
Further discussion? Alderman Lopez?
I, I want to echo those sentiments. I think it's a very good idea, um, but I think there's other approaches that we need to consider as well. Potentially rent stabilization or, or something along those lines. And I don't think targeting one specific project without any context behind that really makes any sense. Not that I'm disagreeing with, uh, Alderman Cleaver, but more that I've observed that this particular project has been, uh, targeted by, uh, advocates, I guess. Just because of its proximity to another project, regardless of the factors or logistics that are involved, or the fact that it was designed as one bedrooms instead of families. And I think we need to be very responsible to the people that we are pledging to serve or representing ourselves as advocating for in making sure that we are thoroughly briefing them on projects that we are trying to suggest that they stand up for. Making sure that we're being attentive to their, their needs and the priorities that they have. And, and not, not just gearing people up to come out and advocate for something we've decided that we want without really any context. I have, I have jumped on any number of causes in the past, but specifically in areas where I have a lot of background and a lot of research. Um, and I think we do need to do more as a city in terms of, uh, a more holistic approach to affordable housing. But I don't think that should be specifically project by project, and I don't think this is, this is the right one for it. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none? Would the clerk please call the roll? Alderman O'Brien?
Yeah.
Alderman Cle?
Yes.
Alderman Dow?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Laws?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Wulshin?
Yes.
You have fourteen ayes and zero ayes. And that motion carries. Resolution twenty dash twenty-eight is declared duly adopted as amended.
Second reading of Resolution R twenty-one one eleven, authorizing the City of Nashua to enter into an amendment to the agreement with Fuel Media Holdings for advertising services.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes, I move for final passage by roll call, and I'd like to be heard on it.
Alderman Jettie?
Uh, so this, uh, uh, has to do with the, uh, contract that we have with Fuel Advertising for the ads on the transit buses. So the contract that we had with them provided that, that Fuel Advertising pay us a minimum amount. And then, uh, sixty-five percent of the revenues, uh, you know, sixty-five, thirty-five percent split. Because of COVID, there, uh, it's been tough selling advertising. And, uh, they've, they've not come anywhere near their, uh, their anticipated revenues. Uh, so, uh, Director Marshon is asking us to amend the contract uh, to eliminate the minimum amount that Fuel Advertising would have to pay us and just stick with the sixty-five, thirty-five percent split uh, for, and that's just for this year. And that was, uh, brought to the Budget Review Committee and unanimously recommended final passage. Thank you.
Thank you. The motion before us is for final passage, uh, Resolution twenty-one dash one eleven. Further discussion on that motion? Alderman Lopez?
Did we not get in on the, uh, campaign advertising market somehow?
No.
I just feel bad. I'm not, not standing in the way of it.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, would the clerk please call the roll? Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Cle?
Yes.
Alderman Dow?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Laws?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Wulshin?
Yes.
You have fourteen ayes and zero ayes. That motion carries and Resolution twenty-one dash one eleven is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R twenty-one one twelve, relative to amending the fiscal year twenty twenty HUD Annual Action Plan to accept round three CDBG CV funding under the twenty twenty CARES Act.
Alderman Harriet Gathright?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I motion for final passage of R twenty-one dash one one two by roll call.
Motion is for final passage by roll call of Resolution twenty-one one twelve. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll? Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Cle?
Yes.
Alderman Dow?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Laws?
Yeah.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Wulshin?
Yes.
You have fourteen ayes and zero ayes. That motion carries and Resolution twenty-one dash one twelve is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Tabled ordinance O twenty forty-four relative to a being on certain indoor activities for certain businesses starting at nine thirty PM.
Alderman Lopez?
I'd like to make a motion that, that, uh, ordinance be removed from the table.
Okay, motion is to take ordinance twenty dash forty-four from the table. Would the clerk please call the roll? Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Cle?
Yes.
Alderman Dow?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Laws?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Wulshin?
Yes.
You have fourteen ayes and zero ayes. And that motion carries. Alderman, Alderman Lopez?
I'd like to make a motion for indefinite postponement.
Motion is for indefinite postponement. Discussion on that motion? Alderman Lopez?
Uh, I mean, the best we could do with what we had was to raise awareness of, um, the dangers of COVID. People did what they were going to do. But the intention behind the discussion that the Board of Public Health had was to provide some kind of rapid intervention with Christmas and New Year's, uh, fast approaching. They have come and gone. The results have come and gone. Um, we, we did lose people, um, but we can't necessarily attribute that to any specific legislation or, or actions on our part. Um, and moving forward, it's much more productive to support restaurants, uh, in making sure their employees have access to vaccinations when possible, that they're practicing, uh, masking and social distancing, and that we're encouraging the public to remember to remain on guard, uh, and practice similar measures.
The motion is for indefinite postponement. Alderman Clemmons?
Uh, thank you. I, I just want to say, um, you know, I, I, obviously I didn't support this when it, when it came out. I respect the Board Health and I respect the, the COVID guidelines and things like that. But what I did want to speak to was a lot of the unfair things that were said to my colleague Alderman Lopez during the debate. I, I don't, you know, I often agree with, with Alderman Lopez. On this particular one, I did not. Um, but he's a good person. He proposed this legislation because he believed in it. And when each and every one of us does that, we do it for a reason. And, you know, I thought some of the public criticism of Alderman Lopez was unfair. And I, and I just wish that Nashua would have, um, conducted itself better, uh, during that dialogue, because some of the stuff that was said was unnecessary. I, I, I have the utmost regard for all of my colleagues, but in particular Alderman Lopez, um, because he has the courage to bring things like that forward that he knows is not going to be popular. But he does it anyway because he, he believes in it. Uh, and, and that's the kind of Alderman that we all should aspire to. Uh, so I just wanted to make that, that known.
Thank you. Anyone else? Motion is for indefinite postponement of ordinance twenty dash forty-four. Seeing no one, would the clerk please call the roll? Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Cle?
Yes.
Alderman Dow?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Laws?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Wulshin?
Yes.
You have fourteen ayes and zero ayes. And that motion carries. Ordinance twenty dash forty-four is indefinitely postponed. New business resolutions.
First reading of Resolution R twenty-one one eighteen, establishing a housing expendable trust fund funded by appropriations and making a supplemental appropriation of thirty thousand dollars into the expendable trust fund.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Dow? Alderman Karen? Alderman Harriet Gathright? Alderman Schmidt? Alderman Tenza? Alderman Lopez? Alderman Cle? Alderman Clemmons? Alderman Cleaver? Alderman O'Brien? And myself. I think I got everybody. Alderman Lou, sorry, missed you. Okay. Alderman Laws. Okay, thank you. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution R twenty-one one nineteen, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars from the State of New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Exotic Species Program and authorizing the transfer of matching funds.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Clemmons? Alderman Dow? Alderman Schmidt? Alderman Harriet Gathright? Alderman Tenza? Alderman Cle? Alderman Cleaver? Alderman O'Brien? Did I get everyone? Alderman Lopez and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee. New business ordinances.
First reading of ordinance O twenty fifty-three, authorizing a stop sign on Shawnee Drive at its intersection with Connetwell.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Dow? Alderman Cle? Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure. Period for general public comment. Is there anyone that wishes to address the board?
I do.
Okay, name an address for the record, please, and just note that we have a three-minute, uh, limit.
Yeah, um, I don't know if I was just trying to find myself on the board. Oh, there I am. Yeah, Beth Scare, one eleven East Hobart Street. Um, I, I haven't been able to call in the last few times because I have. I I haven't been able to call him the last few times because I have night class. But I just wanted to let the mayor and Alderman Schmidt know that they've made my state women's sports flag very famous. I'm bringing it to Washington DC for International Women's Day on March eighth, and everybody's really looking forward to it. You know, it's a shame that they wanted to censor it, that they oppose the message of protecting women's right to have their own sports, but the the upside is that they've made a big splash for my flag, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to address the board? Mr. Keating. You're on mute, Mr. Keating.
Bob Keating, five Coburn Woods. I, again, just echo that I'm very pleased by the initial idea of the Housing Trust Fund and the support, you know, all the way across the, you know, the Alderman. I I knew there's been a strong support for affordable housing. I I appreciate, you know, Alderman Cleaver's, you know, offering the idea that he has expressed before about fifteen percent for the the school street. I think there's a lot of room there that in within the Housing Trust in terms of how to fund that forward. I I saw the proposal to have a minimum of ten thousand dollars, and I would suggest that in looking at other Housing Trust Funds, having some ways tied to development projects is one way that can help it move forward generally more easily than having a a standing set amount from the from the board itself. But I just, you know, this is the start. I, you know, I just very appreciative in in hearing that, and I think a lot of the community will too. And I I think it does echo what I've what I've heard again and again, that many people want to be able to, you know, the mayor and the and the board to, you know, to do something that we can create a more permanent structure to be able to address the the critical needs within our community. So, you know, with that, I just, that's what I wanted to say. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board this evening? Not seeing anyone. Remarks by members of board. Alderman Dow.
Yes, just a couple of quick things. One, I mentioned last night at the budget meeting that I just want to say that it's been sad that we've lost over five hundred thousand people to COVID nineteen. And it's it's I think we all should keep those people in our in our minds because it's sad for all these families to lose someone. The other thing is, as far as COVID here in Nashua, I'd like to thank Bobby Bagley and her staff for doing such a fantastic job of of keeping COVID nineteen in Nashua in the area to as much of a minimum as possible. And also the vaccine site at Nashua High South. I've been there a couple of times. It it's working like clockwork. They've got it down to a science. They have the the public health and hospital nurses. It's giving shots. They have the National Guard controlling the making sure that people have appointments correctly and members of the Nashville Fire Rescue that are there sort of directing traffic and starting this week in the evening hours, there will also be a police officer there just to ensure that it keeps running smoothly. So kudos to everybody involved in that activity, and I think they're doing an outstanding job and hope that they continue that until as many people as are would like to get a vaccine, get the vaccine. Thank you.
Anyone else? One moment, Alderman Karen.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Um, yeah, so I would just like to thank Director Bagley, as much as she's been working very hard on the COVID nineteen situation and maintaining all of the other public health emergency responses that we we traditionally deal with from year to year. She also showed a lot of really good leadership in helping us make some major steps, I think, for addressing the city's deficit of warming stations. The the Nashville Soup Kitchen is willing to start working and moving forward with a weekend warming station, which I know will be a great relief to people who are outside and and unsheltered and may have to be huddling in doorways. And it will also be some positive news for downtown businesses who don't know exactly what to do about people who are in distress on the weekends when there isn't anybody to call. To those businesses, I would say, support your local nonprofits. The Soup Kitchen particularly is in the middle of developing a large scale project that is very, very, very sorely needed in the city. It's it's Spring Street project will provide decent and respectful shelter space for many single women and many single men who don't have other opportunities. It will also provide family shelter space, which is extremely short in this in this community. And it it includes amenities that enhance the dignity and the ability to transition out of homelessness. Things like childcare and general resource space and classroom space. So there they have really good plans for that site. They are kicking off their capital campaign. I received a piece of mail a couple days ago that was very, I had very mixed feelings about. It was in memory of Kristen Wolf, a friend of mine who I brought up in previous meetings, having passed away at the end of last year. She was one of the street artists who worked with me on the the veterans murals that we've done around town with positive street art. She, if anybody's interested, she did the the airplane on the eagle that says thank you. You can see it from Water Street. And she she experienced homelessness, and her family forwarded a check to me and asked me to do whatever they thought would be most helpful to people who are homeless. And that is going to go to the Soup Kitchen and help with the warming station because I think that's something that really would have helped her. Also, the helping or the stepping stand stepping stones program, a new program to Nashua located in Pine Street Extension, works with adolescent homeless youth. Another huge problem that we've we've finally started to make some headway on for people who are experiencing homelessness ages eighteen to twenty five. It gives them a day center to go to. It gives them a place where they can search for jobs. Or, I mean, even just take a take a crack like crash from the pressures of the day, pursue education, identify resources and and case managers. It's a really good program, and they're also going to be working on extending into Saturday. So again, I want to thank Director Bobley for all of her help in managing that meeting. It is a very good step, I think, and there was a lot of conversation about what we can do to to better approach this in future meetings. So I think it was very encouraging. And then finally, I just wanted to let my constituents know that we have scheduled the Ward Four Town Hall for March eighteenth. So I will be posting about that on my page. It should be on the city's website. Please plan to attend and bring any issues that you have that are local to Ward Four up. It'll be your chance to talk to the mayor, find out about city projects that he's working on, and express your views. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Alderman Cleese.
Alderman Karen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I I will defer. I will defer to Alderman.
Karen.
Alderman Karen. Sorry about that.
When you can't see someone. Thank you, Alderman Cleese. On a happy note, I'd like to take the time to thank Ruth Razewick, our Deputy City Treasurer, for her forty five years of service to the City of Nashua. She beat me out by a couple of years. Her dedication to her job and the citizens of the city should not go unnoticed. I want to wish her many happy years in her retirement and know that she will be missed by all who worked with her over the years. And because of COVID and everything, she really didn't have a huge retirement party. But hopefully down the road, the Board of Aldermen will be able to recognize her in person before the year is out. And thank you for that, Alderman Cleese.
Thank you, Alderman Karen. Alderman Cleese.
Thank you, Madam President. I I have I have a couple of comments to make. One is, I'd like to thank the mayor for his Ward Three Town Hall meeting. I've gotten a lot of really good feedback for it. The residents of Ward Three that were able to attend truly appreciated it. And because it is videoed, I was able to send that out to other constituents who were unable to make it that day. And and it brought up conversation, and I think that was a great thing. The same with the the parking study meeting for Ward Three that Director Cummings had. That too brought up conversation, and I was able to continue with my constituents afterwards explaining kind of the the parking rules and and bringing them to the the regulations and so on. And so many of them did not even realize not being able to park within so many feet of a of an intersection or near someone's driveway or crossing someone's driveway, which might render what they think is possible parking as a non-existent parking. So again, both of these meetings opened up conversation, which I think is is terrific. I'd also like to comment that I think the city is doing a great job with the the vaccines in areas that cannot get to the high school or to something like that. Director Bagley has been doing a phenomenal job. And that brings me to Alderman Lopez and Alderman Clemmons. Alderman Clemmons, I'd like to thank you for making a point to state that Alderman Lopez was unduly criticized for his wanting to do the right thing. And I think he always tries to do the right thing, and we're lucky to have him. I'd also like to make a side comment of that we on the board oftentimes are criticized, and we're elected officials, kind of goes with the duty. But I don't know of any board member that does anything, any vote for selfish reasons or for anything else like that. We may disagree, but I know everybody is doing the right thing by their heart and so on. And for the public, rather than doing this angry social media blitz, I think perhaps contacting us and you doing your homework, finding out why we feel the way we do. We don't always agree, and we don't always agree with the mayor, but we have civil dialogue. And I think that we need a little bit more of that in the country. So thank you so much for letting me be heard.
But anyone else?
President, you're muted. Sorry.
Thank you. Alderwoman Lou.
I just wanted to say, Alderman Cleese, that was so nice. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, committee assignments. I mean, committee announcements. Something like that. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. Tomorrow night, Wednesday, the twenty fourth at seven PM, will be infrastructure via Zoom, Zoom, Zoom.
Alderman Tenza.
Just a reminder, next Thursday, March fourth, PDC, we have our public hearing on some piece of legislation that are before us and then followed by a regular meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Alderwoman Lou.
Tomorrow at nine from nine to ten is a Cultural Connections Committee meeting, and Ms. Kana will be presenting the, well, some of the COVID relief programs available. And also Camille Patterson will be presenting on the changes to the transit system. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't see anyone else. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to motion that the February twenty third, twenty twenty one, meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
Motion is to adjourn. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yeah.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Lars.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gaffray.
Yes.
Alderman Moshu.
Yes.
You have fourteen yeas and zero nays.
And we are adjourned at nine fifty five PM. Thank you, everyone, and good night.
Good night.
Good night.